Alright.
Everybody promoted Hannah?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks very much. Okay, welcome everyone. This is the Monroe Planning Commission regular meeting for... Is it regular?
It's a special.
It is a special meeting for Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. It's seven oh one P M. And I am going to call this meeting to order and ask Hannah to take role.
Right. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. We have commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, and Nugent, Excuse our low, and Petrino.
Thank you very much. Okay. Public comments. This is the time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe, except those issues subject to a public hearing. When invited to speak, please approach the podium. We do not have a podium, but seat at the head of the table, please. And state your name and association with the city or area of residence. The timer will then be started. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and the signup sheet we have Sherry Novak.
So do I need to say my name even?
Please.
Hi, I'm Sherry Novak. I live at two one four South Blickley Street in Monroe. Been a long time citizen here since the eighties, been in this house since ninety one. And today, because we were talking about the downtown area and I walk down there a couple of times a day. I, and my concern is that we do everything we can to support and help the small businesses. And as I keep seeing them go out of business, they come into town, they go out of town, and they're not going out of business. They're going to other cities, Sultan Duval, Arlington, like Stevens. And I really, whatever we can do to help, help them stay here and work together with them. I know I've heard that they think the city is a bit severe when they go to do things and that they're not feeling like it's, they're approachable, they're afraid, they're think they're gonna just go through and pick them apart and then they'll go out of business and nobody wants that. We really like, the more people that stay there, the better it is for all of us. We don't have broken windows. We don't have, you know, this trash around as much. We don't have people on the corners. It used to be just full all the time and I'd really love to see that happen again. I know people say stuff about parking, but it's always been the same and we used to have a lot more cars down there than we do now. And I think there are some vacant lots. I don't know if that's the city got the money from heaven that we could have public parking, but, but I don't really think that's the major thing. I think they need to be welcomed and supported and whatever we can do to work with them. And if there's things that need to happen, just be generous and gracious and, you know, work with them, give them time, let them know what to expect and that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Yeah, and I'll probably go home because I get a bit bored.
Want to sign up and speak now?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. So.
Sorry, I haven't notified your station.
Yeah. Hope you sign up.
Listen, is that just your cursor?
Just me.
Okay.
Hi, Jamie. Go ahead and, yes, go ahead and sit and state your name, your association with the city.
I'm Jamie Docstater and I'm a business owner in downtown and I, I was here last week for the last meeting. So I just had a couple more kind of questions, concerns that I noticed, I know you guys were talking about the forty nine person limit for events and that it would be permitted if it was under forty nine. It would be conditional if it was over forty nine. As a business owner, I know we jumped through all the hoops to get the occupancy permits that tell us how many people we can have in our buildings. And that just seems like an extra layer of just an extra, extra hoop, an extra layer that we have to go through. I know I host parties all the time and we actually target fifty people at one of my businesses. And I can tell you that when we target fifty, sometimes six people show up, sometimes seventy people show up. And if it was on me as the business owner to have to say, hey, you know what? You guys have fifty people. Grandma has to stay home. Or I might get an extra fine or something that, that puts a really big hardship on the business. And I think, I, I know, I'm just kind of a, a little bit of word vomit here. I think from my perspective, that would make it just really inhibitive to be able to offer certain services to the community. I, I also know you guys talked about a delay, a little bit of a delay in this last week. And also as a business owner, that's a really huge hardship on some of us. I, I know personally, when we had to delay a month opening the Arcade Cranes on Main, that cost me over ten thousand dollars out of my pocket. And so we're not talking about small change for people. These are really big effects. So I know it's really important to get it right, yes, but it's also really important to make the changes that we kind of need to see downtown so that we can get some of these businesses up and running. Really, I think that's about all I have. So. Yeah, I, I know I've had a number of you guys reach out to me in the last week. And I appreciate that. I think it's, it's really good to know that we're trying to make some stuff happen. Clearly it, there, there's a lot of at stake personally for everybody who's downtown and any of these businesses that we have that are vacant for even a couple of months. I mean, that's just inviting a lot more crime, a lot more problems, having Jessica's business specifically closed across the street from me. You know, when she's there, she and I keep an eye on each other and we actually let each other know when there's problems around. So we kind of keep an eye on the, the criminals that are there that we know are a problem. And we watch each other's buildings. If she's not there, I don't have anybody watching outside of my building for a huge chunk of time. So I, I know if that seems like a small thing to you guys, yes, her business is not mine, so I don't have the same stake in it. But even her not being open means the business she brings in doesn't come down to my business. It doesn't keep some of the criminals away. It doesn't keep some of the walking traffic there. I know you guys also talked about parking and I think that's not really something that you need to be concerned. Well, I can't tell you what you need to be concerned about, but, but I think it's something that's not really one of the main focuses. I know the chamber does events down there with a thousand people or more. And those people find a way to get downtown. So I don't think the fifty one people is going to be an issue. I think just, just my personal experience. I also know.
Thanks, Jamie. Thanks for coming.
If you want to stay for the meeting, please feel free to come in. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The downtown commercial item number two on tonight's agenda, so it will be too late.
Okay.
Yeah. Your daughter.
Yeah.
Good evening. Took this last minute for me, so I like broad concepts. So I'm Dan Newheart. I took over for Dick and Lucy Newheart. They started Dick's Tire House in nineteen sixty eight. My grandpa J J moved here in forty two, was a logger and a construction worker. My dad kind of grew out of that, his business, and now I've taken the reins. So here's my concern. So I just kind of put a challenge to each committee member. Keep in mind that I don't have an axe to grind other than just a philosophy. And the philosophy is be careful that we don't rob people of their life's work. I've spent many years, seventy hours a week to maintain the family business. And that's what it takes. And so sometimes you hear about zoning changes and then so and so lost their land and then they couldn't do anything with it. They'd have to spend fifty million dollars to rebuild it so it's usable. Well, they wouldn't get that payback until their grandchildren died. See, see where I'm going? So just I encourage the committee, keep that in mind as you deal with these zoning things. I know we all want to make a little miniature downtown Bellevue right there with all the pretty little things. And I spent a few years in Bellevue and they got some beautiful stuff down there. But, you know, out here in the country, remember to respect people's property. And I'm not saying you're not. But I think it's just a good thing to throw out and go, yeah, you know what? You're right. These people, these are hardworking people. Spent their lives, generations, developing and maintaining properties. So that's my spiel. Any questions? Okay, so anyhow, I appreciate every one of your time. I know this is challenging. I've served a number of committees and boards over the years. Not here in East Towne State, but so I get the game somewhat well. But I thank you all for your time because you're taking personal time to do this, but I'm sure you're not paid very well, if any at all. Maybe they buy you a hamburger once in a while, so.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Thank you guys for your time and thank you for your consideration as you make these changes. Of course, my primary interest is down there at Dick's Tire House, building Mayor Polaris, that area. Of course, my brother, Town and Country Tractor across the street. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm just gonna kind of continue what Dan was talking about.
So Mike, if you wouldn't mind, first of all, just cite your name.
Mike Newheart, Town and Country Tractor.
Thank you.
Four four nine Railroad Avenue. Yeah, I was a little kid, you know, we started out down there at the other end of town. There was nothing going on in town. There was no building inspectors. There was no building department. We went down to the old city hall. And Herman Messini says, now you want to build a building? Yeah, you gotta tear that old house down first. Well, just make sure you do a nice job, guys. Stay off the sidewalks. And we did it. And, you know, I've been here in this town for fifty five years. And I look around and I see the empty buildings. And I see empty property. I see eleven acres up there by Lowe's. Why is there eleven acres empty up at Lowe's? That tells me that there's something that's wrong at City Hall. Is it the permit process? Is it that the people in charge of zoning have not looked, are not looking at the big picture? I try to look at the big picture because the big picture is what pays my bills. I need people to come into town. For a little while, a few years back, we started charging sales tax based upon destination because you have the option to do that. And one day I said, you know what? The city needs these dollars. And so we started charging people's city of Monroe sales tax. And we pull a lot of money into this town. Because most of our customers are from outside the city limits.
Pause it for a second, Mike.
Because we sell tractors.
We make it our deal with them that, that they're, the sale is happening in Monroe.
Right.
We're not going to deliver it out to their place. The sale is happening in Monroe. Sale happens in Monroe. Services after that because we want the sales tax coming here. And customers are okay with it.
We, we've lost a few sales, but we tell people, look, we're doing business in the city of Monroe. You're driving into Monroe. You're using Monroe streets. You're using Monroe's facilities. We're here in Monroe. We're paying taxes and it's only right that we're doing business here in town. So you have to pay the sale tax here in Monroe, not the county tax. So every month, the city of Monroe gets sales taxes from us collected of tens of thousands of dollars that, that money is coming into Monroe. So, and the reason I'm telling you this is because I'm not here to beat anybody up. What I'm saying is, as a business owner, I look at the city and I want to see the city happen. I want to see it go. My wife threw this thing on my desk this morning, so I didn't have a chance to look at it real well, but I did look at it some. There's some stuff on this zoning map here. I was looking at some of the different designations and a lot of it really makes sense as a business owner. There's a few things I have a little question on as to why we're mixing these things here and there's kind of some gray areas. And as a business owner, it's the gray areas that really make it tough because if we decided to sell one of our buildings or both of our buildings, who could we sell it to? Somebody who looks at that says, oh, well, that zoning is a city park. Well, that kind of makes that piece of property worthless. And I've been making payments on that property for a long time of about two of about a million and a half dollars so far. And I'd like to get that back someday. And so when you're, as a city, when you're looking at bringing business into town and bringing people into town and where you have a strong business, you're gonna, you're gonna have your.
Mr. Newheart.
Yes, I'm probably out, out of time.
Yes, sir.
But I'm sorry about that. This is something that affects the rest of our lives. So it's really sad that we've got three minutes or five minutes. Because this is not something that just comes here today and is gone tomorrow. So be careful what you're doing.
Would you like to offer explanation on those?
Yeah. So the public hearing got delayed until nine thirty, so you will have plenty of opportunity to come back and speak. Yeah, September thirty.
Yeah, I won't be here September thirty.
But if you have comments, definitely feel free to send them to Amy or come, you can always come back. I just want to clarify that the property is down in your area. No changes are proposed. This is really along Main Street. So I just want to clarify that for you.
Okay, but still, I, I mean, really be careful. Because if something is screwy, because we got eleven acres that's empty, that's not collecting taxes up there by Lowe's. I mean, that's just an example.
Yeah.
We've, we've got to, we've got to figure something out.
Yeah, and I'm just from staff to let you know, that's, that's city owned property.
I know.
They are waiting for something very specific to develop, so that's why it's so vacant. So I hear you, but there's, there's history behind it.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Maybe the city needs to change their palate.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. So September thirty?
September thirtieth and new public hearing notices will go out.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Have a wonderful evening.
Did you want to provide public comment? We're still in the, nope, you're good. Okay, come on in. Sorry, we're just, we're displaced tonight. Making the best of a situation.
Go. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
We have minutes to.
I'm going to approve the minutes from the September ninth planning commission meeting.
Kelsey, would you care to second?
I second them.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Opposed? Minutes are approved. So we have three items of old business. Item six point one introduction to proposed code cleanup phase one for Monroe MMC Title twenty two. U D R, Leanne's with us again tonight to talk about all the hard work she did on this cleanup.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. So I'm back today to go over the U D R phase one cleanup. We had the whole presentation last meeting, so I'm not going to go through that whole thing today. But just a reminder that for phase one, we're looking to clean up inconsistencies and anything that doesn't require policy considerations. So errors that were made, inconsistencies, that kind of thing. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to go ahead and answer any of those for you.
Mister, yeah, Kelsey?
I have a lot of questions, but I feel like I need to probably just email them to you because it's like every page, there's something on it. I feel like we had a huge agenda for this week and getting through all of the permitting was, all of it was overwhelming. And I only got through like maybe two hundred pages of that because it's seven hundred pages long. So I am not ready to like say we can move forward on this.
So would you like another workshop?
I think we just, I mean, did everyone get through it on the planning commission? Did we all look through?
Well, it's, it's basically identical to what was presented last week and it's basically cleanup. There's.
But there are ones that are added, like the, like full on, this is adding something to the code. I know you said that it wasn't.
Yeah, so maybe we can go through a couple of, Kelsey, because anything that was added was either like a, like a direct copy from state law or from our previous U D R. There was no like new, completely new out of the blue and nothing added. And you're, you're definitely welcome to email me as well, but if some of the other commissioners have the same questions. And I can pull it up on my screen too, if that's easier.
We could probably move forward and come back to that. I need to find one. There's a bunch of questions, especially on like the housing part. Are, is there cleanup on the ones that aren't just the, the graphs that we were given? Like the multifamily stuff, the design, or is that the next part of the agenda?
So Leanne, how about you pull up the, the proposed changes so we can be specific? So the big picture design guidelines are not changing. The, there was a change to the front residential floor is the zone and it had to do with the amount of area of a house or that can be a garage. That is the specific change we're asking you to review and this was a clarification and an error. So the whole code itself is not being opened up. It is a very specific topic. Yeah, so. So Leanne, actually go, go to your strike through edits. I think that will be more helpful. I'm pretty sure that's the one you're asking about.
Like the, yeah, the ones that aren't in the graph.
Can you still? Oh, you mean the Excel spreadsheet?
No, I'm.
Or what, what feature you want? Do you know?
Twenty eight. So like the design standard, chapter twenty two point forty two.
Okay.
Yes. That was the one specific thing that was being changed because I went through all, like all of that and had notes. So maybe I misunderstood the assignment.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a holistic change of the code. The areas that we were asking you to review were strike through underlying edits. So it's really specific to a few items. So here's, here's an example. So this area here, you can see retaining walls shall maintain a minimum five foot separation between walls and shall have five feet of unencumbered landscaping per chapter twenty two forty six landscaping standards. So we could jump back to the spreadsheet and see number two. But for this one, it's just offering clarification on that five foot and adding that word unencumbered. So to make sure that us and the developers on the same page and that is the same wording as the landscape standards. So we're not, we're not actually adding anything. I mean, technically there's words, but those same words are already in the landscaping chapter on this.
For the next phase of this, they are, we are adding stuff or is it, this is done?
Yeah, this, this is corrections only. Yeah, this, this phase one that we're in right now is just like things like this, consistency and errors. Phase two is on the, like, no timeline. That's not concluded in part of this and that will have more policy considerations. Land uses being a big one. But because that requires much more conversation, both planning commission and council, we're saving that for phase two. Phase one is all things like this that are more clarification or things that were just missed, copy paste errors, that kind of thing. Okay, that makes, so Leanne, your table is still up. Is it possible to go into? Sorry. That's okay. Just, just to clarify what. My screen is huge, so I'm not sure.
Well, if we, if we're having the option to get to go in there and be like, hey, can we change this after this clerical stuff? Is that, that's on the table in phase two or no?
Not at this time. We, we were not going to open up the, so.
But we do have the opportunity to do that.
I would say we're looking at twenty six, twenty twenty six, because next year you've already got a full agenda and we'll be starting phase two, which we really have to fix the land use tables with the definitions. So that project has already been designed, but as Brandy knows, each year we do, well, and you as well, the program of work and I've just started adding these items below that commissioners had concern about.
Because there's like, even just in one of those in the in the second part, the design standards, there's a part that just says the city doesn't have to do these design standards. So I feel like there's a lot of concerns in here on like that we should still be able to add to, but if that's not the appropriate time to be able to do this, I, I guess I'm confused on that. But I think we should push, if there's some things that were developers aren't going to have to do for the next two years that are going to affect everything.
Yeah, so, so as a reminder with this phase one is we do still have over sixty five items that are currently making it probably more confusing for developers, things like that five foot landscape, depending on which chapter you read it in, it could confuse people. So we have all those errors that are currently outstanding and our goal was to do this phase one, which is the bulk of the changes, but to get those cleaned up because some of them have been outstanding for a good five years. So the phase two, like I said, already has a list that staff has been working on as we've been using the code, same as phase one, but they will require that more policy, which is not something we're looking at to do with this phase one right now.
But as a reminder, this spreadsheet was put together by staff to correct errors. And so the spreadsheets, all items on the spreadsheet are down below redlined in.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Okay, so connected to each other.
Yeah. So that's.
So you can see, can you see the, the cop, the strike through right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is an example. So this is from the landscaping chapter and you see over here, this is number two. So can you see the spreadsheet?
Yep.
Okay, great. So we're going to jump down. So these are right now, I have them sorted. I'll sort them back by number. So number two, you can see is right here. So this is the existing text. This is the proposed and this is the reason, the consistency. So match landscape chapter table, it gives the number, the area between the two walls shall be five feet of unencumbered landscaping. So, and then you can have the reason. And then you can reference back was the goal with the, the comments in the strike and delete versions.
The consistency ones make total sense, like, or that if it wasn't, yeah, the same definition, or I think that there was some added definition. There's just one that was straight up like this is being added, none added, like number twelve, none, add requirement. So this is not a clerical thing, right?
Well. If you look though, that this is from our current code, so that when the none, it did not get added when we added, when we redid. So it's a holdover. It's from chapter eighteen, which was the previous version and with the reformatting, it just got missed. So it's pulling the same wording that we had previously into our current code.
I'll just save the other notes for when we do policy changing.
So I want to clarify, do you have the information then to go through and understand the, the changes? Do you want us to hold another workshop?
Well, I feel like if it's the clerical stuff, it, but I do feel like this needs to be put back on the agenda to change things because like we're going through, specifically going through and saying we have, they need to have some certain requirement for, requirement for landscaping, which is great. But if we could add native into that, that could change like a lot of moving forward on like how our city is.
Okay.
And when is that appropriate to do that? I don't know.
Okay.
Because we're already, we already have that in the code. In, I'll find the specific page, but like that where we want to do these things, but if we could just add that one word, native plans or how much buffer, it's like, oh, you need to save some of the plans here, but there's no specific number, percentage or any like specifics of what the developers need to do. And if we're not going to have that for the next couple of years, then these, everything can just be tore out. And there's a couple of obscure things where it just says, I like that there's some musts and that we have to do that. But on the, the wording that isn't must, it's like, if, how do they prove that they can't do some of the, some of those things? Like we need to say, they need to try this way first, like for the bio swell, they need to try this way first and make sure that they can, that cannot happen before they go into the stormwater.
So that's a future project.
Yeah.
And some of that stuff would be follow up code language to the comp plan because if I remember correctly, there is some new language that's.
Follow up code language to the comp plan, because if I remember correctly, there is some new language that's proposed. Um trying to address some of that and urban farming is one of them, the storm stormwater is another one. That's not this.
Okay.
That is a future project, maybe part of phase two, maybe separate just to implement the comp plan. So um to come at a future date, and I'm gonna note it just so we don't forget it.
For taking on so much time.
No, this is important, okay, we need to make sure.
Don't want it to be this.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Leanne.
Did anybody else have any questions when they were reading through about any of the numbers?
See anyone muted? Brandy, how you doing?
Good.
Okay, I think. That was it for questions, Leanne, thank you.
Okay. So that was an actual.
Yeah.
Request action for tonight.
Okay. Which is?
You pull that up?
Oh, hold on.
I got it.
I got it, I got it, okay, so. I see the all.
Requested action at the conclusion of. Direct staff to prepare formal amendment packet and schedule a public hearing.
Yeah. That's it.
That's the one.
So would anybody like to direct staff to?
Um I moved to direct staff to prepare formal amendment packet and schedule a public hearing before the planning commission.
About a second. Commissioner Nugent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thanks for keeping me on the schedule. Good. Okay, now I'm gonna thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, another item of old business, six point two, proposed quote amendments to Monroe Municipal Code, chapter twenty two dot twenty two downtown commercial zoning district. In chapter twenty two dot twelve definitions, and Amy is here to. Present this evening, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, welcome again. So um apologies, I wasn't here last week, it sounded like you had some great discussion um on this topic. Um I just wanted to dive a little bit deeper into it. Um and I know there's been some confusion over, you know, but tr- trying to visualize where the zones, so that the the neighborhoods are within the downtown commercial area. So um again, like this is our map, and this is probably the map that's causing some confusion, um. And so we'll just go through those. Um so first, the historic main area is the. Everything's kind of the same color, it's the mid orange color sort of in the middle. Um and it also encompasses underneath that red layer. Uh that it within what you'd think would be the promenade, it it's the businesses that aren't facing main street in that area. And businesses on the second story, and so um just the um. The intent of this area is the core area for um specialty commercial uses that serve the entire community. And the goal for the area is to continue to have a high concentration of retail, dining and entertainment functions. While also accommodating professional services and residential housing. It also talks about some cultural and recreational facilities. Moving on the promenade, which is the red portion, businesses on the first floor facing main street. And really the goal here is to promote the pedestrian activity, so the idea. When this came about in um two thousand eighteen was. I'm I'm a pedestrian and I can walk in and I can pop into different businesses down the line as I go. And the next one is the east area, also orange, but uh following against the creek there. Um it's uh shown as an urban village area with pedestrian scale buildings. Some mixed uses of commercial and residential and civic functions, and it talked a lot about really wanting to have some parks and open space and natural areas. So those are the the um. The ideas behind those zones, I didn't go into the neighborhood zones, since we're not touching that, the the light yellow.
Um do you, could you read about the neighborhood, cause we we did have conversation about allowing. The minor banquet uh facilities in residential.
Yes, hold on, I let me, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen really quick, so I can go over to that section. So the purpose of that area. Is it frames the western edge of the historic main area and contains existing single family houses, multifamily buildings, and some commercial uses. This mix of uses is appropriate for this neighborhood as a transitional edge between single family neighborhoods. And the historic main area to provide a setting for small businesses and close in housing options. Future redevelopment of this area will provide a mix of uses. Residential uses in this neighborhood are limited to single family residences and multifamily dwellings.
Can we, uh so single family residences and multifamily dwellings, isn't there a new term for multifamily dwellings?
There's a new term, new term for single family.
Yeah, uh detached and attached housing.
So when it says um residential uses are limited to, what else is there besides those two things?
Just residential.
Well, I mean, so those are the only two, you can either have attached housing or detached housing, right?
Yeah, currently, yes, attached and detached, and attached is three or more, um. We currently don't have duplexes and isn't allowed use, but I think that's changing with our new um. It could, it could be changing, it's it's not part of it right now, yeah.
Oh, so that's what it means, like right now, there would only be apartments or single family and no duplexes, triplexes, that type of thing, that's what that's what this means.
That's the current allowed uses in non-zone.
So these are kinds of some of the things that will also have to be looked at on phase two, right, cause now that's not. Really working with. Like.
It also allows for, um it did say that it had some commercial components in it, and so it also allows for professional offices. Um tech consulting services. Um there's some healthcare services that are allowed conditionally. Um some social services that are outright permitted. Bed and breakfast, veterinary clinics are conditional. Some government facilities are conditional, um. Entertainment facilities are allowed. Outright.
So what is an entertainment facility compared to? The banquet hall event center?
Make sure that was going under that section. It is banquet hall major and minor are permitted to go under that subsection where other items are permitted. Uh like art galleries and art studios.
The. So Brandy, big picture, phase two, absolutely, um because there's a disconnect between the uses or adopted in the. Uh definition section. And the land use tables, the land use tables, this is kind of what uh Ben had talked about a long time ago. When this code got adopted, it was always envisioned, we'd have to come back and do fine tuning, he always give the uh gave the example of the new engine in a car. Start running it, and then you're like, oh my gosh, I have to do fine tuning. Um the proposal that was put before you um for the meeting in banquet halls. As you saw last week, was only to allow um the meeting banquet hall in the historic main. And east downtown, but again, your conversation last week was, should we also expand it to promenade? And should we discuss it also in the uh residential neighborhood? Which is part of the reason we're back this evening, uh the difference between the uh minor and major. Was smaller uses, it has to do with the building code requirements, um generally speaking, if it's forty nine, unless. You don't have any extra building requirements, such as possible sprinklers, um ADA accessibility, you can go in with the building as it is today. Generally speaking, there might be some extenuating circumstances. If it is fifty or larger, you may have to do these additional improvements, so that was. That was the break between major and and minor, and then the conversation we were expecting tonight is. Uh do you want to look at the promenade? Do you wanna look at neighborhood commercial, the promenade again, um where we landed last week was. Or the membership organizations, which. Are kind of similar, that you're no guaran- there's not a guarantee that it's gonna be open all of the time, which is a concern for having that on the promenade. So that's really what we're hoping to to hear from you this evening.
Hmm, I mean, that's why I was asking about that definition, oh. I mean, I was asking about the residential neighborhood definition for that reason, because. We were talking about whether or not we'd want it to be either a conditional uh use in that area, and if it's. I still see it as it's that bridge between downtown and housing, it's got a mix of pretty much everything. I feel like there's actually houses that could be converted into banquet area and event areas there that would actually make it work, whereas if you look on the promenade. Probably not, um and on the rest of the historic downtown, possibly, but um. It seems like from our last meeting, a lot of people had good experiences with seeing large groups of people using downtown in events and banquets and stuff, so. That could be this missing link that we haven't seen of why we need to reinvigorate, or a way that we could help reinvigorate downtown. Is having banquets and events and. I. I think the more places we could allow them, it's more likely that they would be able to, someone would come up with an idea to do it, so. I still am liking the idea of conditional use in residential neighborhoods and everything else that I like how it's laid out on the draft.
Conditional use for what size gathering, what's?
I mean, probably the forty nine and under, because of parking and also. If someone's gonna convert a business or a house into one of these businesses, the expense would probably be more by listening to what you said for the fifty and more.
And I agree with just trying to be less restrictive, erring on the side of less restrictive, and then if these things come up, then we could go. Back to that fine tuning in that direction, because just flat out saying no is like causing, like we've been hearing a lot of problems. But I think that we need to um add. That our max capacity, like the fifteen, the forty nine, is it forty nine or fifty, it's fifty on the thing that it's, we talked about.
Forty nine um and under for a minor and fifty and over for a major, and the reason behind that is is that. Anybody moving into that space would have to go to the building department for a change of use anyway, and that is a, that was the most um logical trigger for them.
Add over, or can we add their or their occupancy max?
It it is.
If their occupancy max of that building is over forty nine. Um then they would have to get a permit, like let's say there's a a property that you can already have sixty people, because they've done all those things. They, and then they will still have to go get a permit for this major every time. So I feel like that we should have, just add that verbiage, forty nine people or fewer, or their occupancy max. Um. Because why would they need to go to get a permit if they're already, they've already gone through all those things?
So in either direction, oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, Lance.
Yes.
Um.
Can you? Help us?
Well, I. I don't know, my comment might not help, um. Just playing a little devil's advocate, I guess, and I I apologize, I don't know if this is the time to say that, but I I did. Wanna bring up something that um. There was a comment made earlier today from a business owner, and they had commented about how. About small businesses and how the city i- is, a- and they're right, you know, the city is. Wanting to promote small and local owned businesses, it's 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 a statement right out of Imagine Monroe. And they had commented that about regulations, and I and I just. Was reminded of many times in my career. When you're dealing with zoning codes and oftentimes where. We're not in a position to really make changes, or the conversation is we're really just, oh, well, here's the rules and. Um in order to change them, it's gonna require some, you know, code amendments, this and this, and you know, it's six months down the road or whatever. Um you know, this this is one of those moments, and I know Amy and I had talked to this, we had some um conversations internally about this. Forty nine, you know, uh major and minor. And the idea being that, well, I in not discounting the 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 building code, cause that. That is a big piece, and as much as we possibly can, we wanna make sure that those are. Consistent with each other, but. And 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 Kelsey, your comment, I think, is 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 timely in that. You know, not, there are properties and there are locations that. Are ready to 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 have more than a fifty person occupancy. And even in that situation, they're gonna have to go through a a public hearing. And they're gonna have to go to the hearings examiner, and. That that's a, that's a three month process that requires additional money as well, so I I just, I feel like. My many years of experience of of, you know, kind of missing some of these points, and just so that we're making a conscious decision about. Whether we are promoting or trying to make regulations easier for businesses or not, and there's an argument to be made that this is one of those. Uh so I just um, I just wanna throw that out there, so. The city pays me for experience, and I feel like I owe it to the planning commission to share that.
I think another qualifier, though, that's really important, is this is for new banquet hall meeting room. Facilities, this is not for somebody who has an existing use, for example, the Maynon Crane. They're a permitted use by right as an amusement facility, if she wants to host parties, she could do that today, she doesn't have to get a condition.
Any.
Whatever the occupancy was given to her when she got her certificate of occupancy when she moved in there.
Okay, yeah, but this is if somebody wants to create, their business is, I run events in my building.
Hmm.
That's that's your use, this is enabling them to do that.
Right, but just adding like a little bit more verbiage, that's for their max capacity, I think. Gets them from having to pull permit or not, because we have outright permitted, and then we have conditional.
So I can explain, I can explain a little bit more with the building department, so when you tip tip that threshold of fifty people and over. That you may have to put in, and this international building code, you may have, we have to put in new bathrooms, you might have to put in extra exits. You might have to do more.
Yeah, and so they already have to do that to get the permit to have these people at this.
Oh, oh. So no, we need to clarify, so if you are um. A good example is um the the chapel um building that's on Hill Street. So they changed their use, which is going through a formal building permit review. From religious, which is an uh um an assembly occupancy to retail, like twenty years ago. So in order for them to go back to a church as a as symbol use, they actually now have to put in. Sprinklers and ADA accessible, because they lost that um the occupancy, so it's not just based on. Number of people, it's what is that building used for?
Saying, okay, it already, I think that you guys are thinking, I'm trying to go against it, I'm saying is that. If the max is more than forty nine, I think they should be able to still allow that permitted minor. Like because, without having to go get a conditional, so like there's permitted. Down in the code, we've got.
Okay.
Um.
Because they're gonna have to comply with all these building regulations.
Will be. Right?
No.
Their building will already be permitted, they as they like.
If they weren't already that used, you have to go through the building, um international building code requires you to go through a change of use permit, and at that time. Those requirements, let's just say there um maybe can have sixty in the retail space. That doesn't mean that they wouldn't have to do upgrades for the assembly use when they change it to an assembly use. So if it's a simple use and they have.
They can already have sixty people in their in their business every day coming in and out, but if they have a sixty person event, now they have to change it, I don't think that we should have to do that. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, so the 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 confusion is, it's complex, I'll just start there. So the example that Amy just gave, so if they are allowed to have a hundred people, but their occupancy is retail. You cannot automatically switch that to a hundred. You cannot automatically switch that to a hundred people and get a banquet hall without going through a change of use.
Because of.
Because assembly, no, 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 this is building code. So if you go from commercial retail, that is one thing in the building code. And you go to assembly, that is a different type of use. And so by that, just simple change, even though the occupancy is still the same. The assembly use by the building code may require additional improvements. So it's not.
Fifty, that forty-nine, you don't have to do.
Nope, it's a combination of total people and what is the building used for today?
So it's the international building code, which is adopted by the state and then the cities have to adopt it.
I don't. Even with like anything.
So it seems like a more likely thing that would happen would be that that. Somebody decides they want to have this business, they're gonna find a spot, they're gonna convert that one spot that very first time into that. If they have a seventy-five person occupancy. Then they would qualify as a major, right? So anything over fifty, it's like. Has to be considered major because that's where there's more parking impacts, more noise impacts, right? Neighborhood impacts and so. Yes, on day one, the building department is going to need um a s- a floor plan. Of whoever wants to come in because they need to know are, is it standing room only? Are you, is it classroom seating? Is it round tables? Uh, they have different ratios of how to determine occupancy based on how the space will be used. So that all needs to be determined to for the building official to get that occupancy number.
Cool. Hit with Lance, can you um unmute?
Oh, I'm I'm unmuted tonight. The uh, a couple of things, and I don't know, I the I. I love doing code amendments. I'm a, I I I've. We've had a lot of conversations and stuff. This is, this is one of the things I like doing in planning. I like doing a lot of stuff. Anyway, the the, a couple of things to keep in mind. About about this, and I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure that every, I'm not necessarily advocating for one thing or another. Um, but I just wanna make sure that that everyone on the planning commission understands some of the nuances. Of what happens next. And by that, I mean. When someone, we make this change, someone comes in, they wanna do this use. What's that gonna look like? And and, you know, some of the nuances that we do as a part of the code amendments matters. And sometimes what you think is going to be. Addressed, uh, might not be. And that and that was one of my my comments. We talk a lot about parking. We don't require parking in the downtown commercial areas. There's, there's, there's no requirement. So there's an argument to be made that having a use that's a conditional use versus a use that's that's. Outright permitted, we're not gonna review the parking. So that, so that public hearing about if, you know, if a use has X number of expected people. Versus another use that has a much lower number. As far as the parking is concerned, that's not gonna be considered. That's, that's not in our code. If we go to, if we go to the hearings examiner. The hearings examiner is a third party, um, uh. Mediator of the best, for lack of a word, is an attorney, and they're gonna apply our code. So if someone is coming in and doing a one hundred, expected one hundred person occupancy. Um, event or banquet hall. That parking is not gonna be a consideration cuz it's not in our code. So I just want people to to understand that because what I don't want to happen is we have. Oh, well, we made this a major so that it's a conditional use. And then somebody comes in with some really large facility. And everybody's ups, you know, like, oh, well, this is a conditional use. We need to address the parking. It's not in our code to require parking, so that's not gonna be addressed. I just, I want everybody to be, to be clear on that. Um, the other thing, and I believe everybody understands that it's hard to do these things. I wish I was in the room. Um, today, uh, is the conditional use for. The residential areas versus the conditional use just for major and minor. Are two are are two different things and probably should be considered separately as much as you can. And it, and at that point, I will. Hopefully, hopefully, hopefully that clarifies more than it, than it confuses, but I just. You know, I just wanted, I wanted the, since, you know, we deal with this as far as. This next step of reviewing them and how that looks. And I just, I just wanna make sure. The planning commission, as you're making these decisions, understand that as much as you can without, you know, dragging you too far into the weeds.
Lance, just for clarification on that, um, so with the, with the down, with the downtown. Commercial area says is that we don't require um parking for commercial uses, but we still require.
For residential.
Uses.
Yeah, so 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 this particular use would not have a parking requirement regardless of how small or how big or small it is.
You wanna repeat that one?
Yeah, I, the last, he's probably not gonna remember the la- very last thing you said, you said, keep. Thought processes separate about the major and the minor and the conditional use in the residential area.
Yeah, so those are, so those are really two things. So you could have, if we were looking at the matrix of of the decision. Is that we could, whichever way you decided to go on major or minor. Then you could also. Say you say, say you don't require, say there is no differentiation between a major and a minor. You also could, under this use, which would just combine these into one, so that one's not. One's not a major minor, you still could require a conditional use. For that particular banquet meeting reception hall in a residential area versus. The the commercially zone downtown. Those are not mutually exclusive.
So I think what he's saying is that if we combined these two into one, you could do permitted across these two. And then still do conditional over here in the residential zone.
But would it be easier just to say minor permitted, major permitted, and then. If we wanted to do conditional for residential, we could do that for minor, something like that?
Yeah.
Well, if if I would say if you were going, if the only reason, the only thing that differentiates the minor versus the major is the occupancy, so. If a minor and a major are going to be permitted, then. I would suggest for clarity that it just be one use in the table because they both have the same requirements. And then. That doesn't do away with the 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 need for someone to get a building permit. So the building code and. And we're not changing the building code, but the, in the zoning code, you could. The occupancy doesn't necessarily have to drive the review process. If that makes sense, I know I'm, now I know I'm throwing. Dirt in the stream.
Does it change anything? I'm not really sure why. Like, you're saying you wanna combine them on the same line?
Or that we could. And then you wouldn't have to have a differentiation between how many people are gonna show up. The the place could have twenty-five people one weekend and could have two hundred and fifty people the next weekend.
Yeah, exactly. That's that, thank you. That's a very, that's a really on the ground way of describing it.
I.
Sorry, what?
And then that would just be straight up permitted.
If you wanted, yeah. I feel like the way that it's set up is kind of like a baby step, right? To be like, okay, if the minors don't work out in this area. Then the majors probably really wouldn't work out. So instead of. I don't know, I can see that's maybe why the separation. But. In our um, in our review of other cities, this is something we noticed that they did. And so um. That's one of the reasons why we brought it forward as an option, but you can definitely change it.
Well, an expediency for permitting.
Yeah.
If if you're under that threshold for the conversion.
Hmm.
And you're an outright permitted use, you get your business license and it's pretty straightforward. Um.
We often get the, why didn't we know? And it's, 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 I know, we didn't know what you were going to do, but in this case, it it's. We just felt like that was a good divider or there doesn't need to be a divider. Melanie has something, yay.
Oh, hey, Melanie.
Hi. Um, I, now that we've kind of had this talk and I understand the kind of more of the ins and the outs of things. I would be in favor of making it one and having it permitted in historic Maine. Um. Remind me, is eastern downtown, does that have some residential in it?
It does, has to have residential, some historic, yeah.
So maybe, so maybe conditional in east. I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing out, but pride. I'd like to just see this permitted in historic Maine. Um, and then perhaps conditional in the residential and um east downtown. But maybe it's better to just also permit it in east downtown. But I. I I kinda like the idea of just making it one and not having the distinction, even just for the one thing that got brought up with like. Ease of um, like the process. If it's, if it's one less step in the process for not only the city, but. For the people that are applying for this, I, I wanna do everything we can legally and just. You know, as a city to make this, these processes easier for everybody. Um, and so if that's, I, it's just, it's one line item. So if there's no requirement that we make this separation, then I would. Say, let's not make the separation cuz it just sounds like more work, more confusion and more room for. Error and and I hate to see that, so.
Clarify, I think Kate said it'd be less, less permitting and less time. If we left a a minor and a major because the mi- the person coming in to apply for a minor could just get it done quickly. Right?
Yeah, and and the distinction is really at the building permit, not, not your land use, but your building permit, but. I mean, honestly, Lance, Lance has a good idea on that. If you just wanna make it permitted, you're. You're still gonna get, if if you're more than fifty and you have to change occupancy building. You have to meet those fire life safety requirements. There's no way around it. But um.
You could already having to do that and then, I guess I'm going back to whatever thing. They're already having to do that for the building.
So why do us?
Why, well, no, why, I think we can just add the verbiage or max capacity, whichever is more.
I, I, yeah, and I, so when I, when I talk to people, when they call in, I can see. That if we added that, that might add a layer of confusion because then they would think that they don't need to go through. The extra building upgrades that you likely would have to go through.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not understanding why they already did that. You know, they already did that for the. I know it's different, but.
Yeah.
I. I'm not getting it. But I do think that we should be able to have conditional in most of those and maybe flat out permitted for the the smaller one. I think they should be separate and I think that we should be able to at least have conditional so we have less restrictions so that people can really. Like come forward and be like, hey, can we do this? Because. I I think it was stated last meeting that these things that are flat out permitted, prohibited are not allowed to go, be talked about at all. Um, right? Like, if it's not in our code, we don't bring it up, we don't variance it, or maybe there is. So like. On the, the very first part, a land use not explicitly permitted by table twenty-two point twenty-two is prohibited. I think that should be. Added or take, just struck through and say can be brought to the council or can be brought.
Not an option. That that's not on the table.
Why?
We could talk about that with phase two, but that that is the way this code was written. So if you wanna go, cuz it's the entire zoning code. It's all of title twenty-two. We can't make this exception in just the downtown commercial. So the options we have tonight are, you can make everything permitted. You can do the recommendation that was brought forward last time. You can consolidate everything to permit it outright and add it to the downtown commercial residential neighborhood and the promenade. But that prohibited, that is not an option for conversation tonight.
Yeah, that's part of that bigger talk.
That's phase two code cleanup, if we get to that.
Can we? We'll get, we'll. We'll get to it. I, it it's, Kelsey, it's a good question. And it, and like Kate says, I think it's something that we. Will, um, and when that day happens, we'll remind everybody cuz you'll be like. Pulling your, you'll be pulling your hair out and go, well, this is a lot of time cuz there there is a way. To build it into your code where you can do interpretations or um. Like, I can interpretation of a similar use. I I don't want, I definitely don't wanna go in the we, but it it is, there's different ways of writing code and ours just has that prohibited, so. Um, but I think Kate made, I I wanted to reiterate something that she said. Is that the regardless of whether we require a conditional use or not a conditional use. The life safety elements are still met. It does not. Um, so that occupancy and and just one other little education piece, if you will. I, the way, and I, and the reason I say this is because we're, we're running into a lot of issues. Where people are moving forward and they're doing uses. They're doing things based on a bill, based on a business license. And then we come in afterwards and are having to have issues with them. And the reason I'm saying this to the whole planning commission is that when you have conversations with people out in the community that are looking to do a business. The number one thing that they can do to help staff and to help themselves is to do a pre-application meeting. And and I think that that's something that the city is gonna really be promoting uh. Over the next year because it is, it is an opportunity. They don't cost anything and there's, and I know that it, it. It deeply troubles me when some, when folks in the community are saying. Well, we don't wanna go and ask the city questions because we're afraid that there's gonna be. Backlash or retribution or what, you know, like that, like when people are saying that. You know, that that raises a big red flag and we want to encourage more of that conversation rather than less. Because it gets everybody in, well, you end up with Facebook postings. I'll just leave it at that.
So I have two questions. Um, so there's a banquet hall between Lewis and Maine and the consignment shop.
Yeah.
Right? So what are they permitted as?
They are permitted as as what they are. They're existing nonconforming. Some people call that grandfathered. They were there uh prior to the code change, the EDR.
Yeah, and on top of that, it was a code interpretation.
Yeah.
Prior to the twenty nineteen title twenty-two code changes.
Okay, so let's say I wanna open a square dance hall and I de- I've identified the property, what? I do, like, I don't, but let's say I want people.
I think it would be fantastic.
Okay, so across from the post office, um, there's a facility that I could host my square dances, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays for you. So.
Okay.
What would I need to do? Come to the city and do currently?
So you'd have to get a business license. Is part of it. You would want to talk to us to make sure that the use is permitted. That's why we're having this conversation tonight. Depending on where you go, that property is downtown commercial historic main cuz it is not on the promenade.
Yeah.
So if it is based on what you're looking at right now, if it's forty-nine or less. They get their building permit, we review it, building probably would review it just to ensure that it meets the ADA requirements.
Cuz right here it's permitted for.
Exactly, exactly. Now, if it is a hundred people are coming, this is fantastic, awesome for Monroe. They would first have to get a conditional use permit cuz that's what it says. And that is a. Um, you have to go before the hearing examiner, which Lance was explaining. And we have specific criteria that says your use is consistent or will not be negatively impacted. The adjacent properties. And it has very specific criteria. If assuming everything looks great, they show, yep, this isn't gonna be a problem. That conditional use permit stays with the property forever, as long as the zoning doesn't change. And the use does not expire or there's not a lapse in um the use. So they're good to go. So back to Kelsey's thing. So they go out and now um they wanna turn it into a wedding facility. They've already got the right um occupancy, they've already got the conditional use permit. Does that help?
I think it does. If it's a one, one-time conditional use permit.
Conditional use permits from the land.
Yeah.
And so let's say I wanna sell my business and I don't wanna have this business anymore. I have a buyer and they're gonna buy my business or they're gonna open up a like-for-like business. As long as it doesn't lapse for more than six months, then.
You get a building, you get a business license, that's it.
Okay.
So that also protects like the people that came in today on like wanting to sell it to the same thing, same type of business.
Yes.
Since it, um, okay, that's awesome. I was gonna ask that later in our discussion. If that, if they're protected to sell that to a like business. Even though we've changed their zoning to maybe a park. That like that they can sell it to a like business is gonna. Without it being.
It doesn't lapse for, yes, for more than six months. They don't have a conditional use permit, but even then. It's permitted you, it was a permitted use at the time they were there. So now, even.
It's permitted, you, it was a permitted use at the time they were there, so now, even though, even though the, so we call that existing non-conforming, we have a whole code section on it. Um, and it, and it lays out, yeah.
But, but they can't, but they can't expand it and that.
Correct. It's expand and non-conformity. Or, or move it, um, I, I had a suggestion before we make a decision on this, I have some slides. Earlier on that I was going to present that just kind of reminded everyone where everything was, do we wanna look at those before we make it?
Could we get, can we start lock cards? Melanie?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna add on to that with, with the question that we had before about the businesses. That, would that be the same with like Song River if they were to sell to a like business, or is it because they're a. They're a non-conforming, that if they sell, that, that's no longer the case?
No, they would be able to sell as long as that they don't lapse for more than six months, um, like-for-like business would be able to. Let's just hypothetically purchase that from them and, and run their own business.
Yeah, this is all hypothetical because these are businesses that we think of and yeah. There's no, there's no underlying idea or anything, it's just a hypothetical asking questions for understanding, to make that clear.
Yeah.
Should we add events to this conforming use, or is why, because all of this is kind of about events? Is there a reason why that word is not specifically in that?
So in the definition that we proposed, this is the major definition, um, it talks about events.
Yeah. I just think that because we brought all of this up about specifically about events, I think it would make sense to have that word.
Um, and it is separate than outdoor events, because those, those are a whole different se- section than the indoor events.
I guess that's used for hosting larger events.
Yeah, and then it's one that's smaller.
Um, I think we should err on the side of like doing more for the cities or conditional on all the ones that are blank. And then the outright permitted on the.
But conditional, if we do conditional.
But if it meets everything on that conditional like they're saying, wouldn't that be appropriate?
But it's a, it's a, an additional process that the, the business owner would have to go through.
I'm saying on the ones where we have blank.
Uh-huh.
That we need to have something.
In, instead of it not being allowed, you would like to see it allowed as a conditional use permit.
Yeah, I like the permit and I like what we have on those, maybe we change the major to permitted, but I think on the other ones, we should be able to have. Like the option.
To meet just these two, these two?
I, I think all of them, I definitely think we should be able to have banquets and events in the promenade. As like a conditional saying like, hey, if this is still open, like there's like the wine and sips. I've gone to bars that have wine and sips and it's still open to the public, so it's not closing down specifically for an event. But it's bringing people in, it's doing.
So they would be able to do that.
Outright permitted.
Outright, they're allowed to do that because they are a wine bar. So they can have events there, that's completely fine, that they don't need to follow this table, they need to follow their, their primary use, such as a wine bar. And they can host a paint and sip, or they can host any of those things, that's fine.
It would be like, there's a, like where the bike shop is, let's say that place turns into. This, a banquet meeting reception hall that people rent out just on Saturday, Friday and Saturday nights only.
That's our primary use.
Yeah, and that's the only thing, and then they're not open on the rest of the time, they don't serve food to the public and stuff, it's only when people rent it out and have parties. Which it's better than it being vacant.
Um, I do know that we heard pretty strongly from city council that they really did not want these types of uses in the promenade. Um, at, when, when we, this went through the first time. Um, should I go back and, and we can look at what those uses look like really quick? Um, and I, I have, I have another consideration in here, but. I just wanted to, I think a question came up regarding the tea house. So um, the tea house is, uh, people refer to it as, it's right underneath the left MU on the screen. And so I tried to show a dividing line, so everything towards us from the red line is mixed use, so the tea house is in mixed use. And then Candido's and that car lot, they, that's where the downtown begins, is right, right there.
That's a tea house.
It used to be, so it's sort of known.
Really good.
Yeah.
Wait, so can we go back, for mixed use?
Sorry, wrong.
Since like Kate's tea house was like a restaurant type place, right, eatery, uh, gathering and um. What other mixed use then, so could that, could people, could this banquet meeting stuff? Be expanded to other areas farther down the mixed use area?
Not with this one, but with phase two, because the, again, this is. We were already looking at the downtown commercial, we had a situation arise. Because you're already reviewing it, we're like, why do we, why don't we try to tackle this with the downtown commercial zone first?
Yeah.
And then expand it, so it is absolutely our intent to look at it in other zones, but this. This is already being reviewed, it's a great opportunity to look at adding this use.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so there's our boundary, and so we're looking in the orange area here, oops, wrong direction. Um, I, then from, you know, coming down uh, south on uh, Lewis, oh, sorry, that, that's the wrong direction, we're going east. Going west on Main Street, um, right at the railroad tracks there, so past grocery outlet, grocery outlet area is general commercial and then. Beyond that, including the, um, the gentleman that were here earlier today, they are in the downtown commercial, the, the overarching uh, zone. And then this is uh, on Lewis Street, and so everything south of railroad tracks here is in the downtown commercial. And then just coming north on, on Lewis Street, it's right there at McDougal, so that's the dividing line. And then there was some questions about what is historic main and what is promenade? Because when you look at the map, it looks like every, all those parcels are fully promenade, and so I just highlighted here in red. Those are promenade businesses and then in yellow, they are in the historic main.
So that second floor will, events will be outright, outright permitted?
Based on the table. Yeah.
So that will fix the problem with this hidden um, room.
Yes. And then here's just another example, promenade versus historic main. And then again, so this, this space is actually, it fronts Main Street on one area, so it's that whole, that whole space, the space for lease there. Um, which is supposed to be sushi spot. Um, and then. Just a little bit more showing you, um, what the historic main is.
So outright permitted for minor, not major, that's how it's currently written.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of show that, um. Because this, the map on the left is our current map and it, it just sort of shows that the promenade is all of those parcels. Which is actually not true and it's caused some confusion. Because it's only the first floor businesses facing Main Street. I um, took this to the Economic Development Advisory Board and they suggested the map on the right, and so this is another proposed change before you. And that is to do, to keep. To, to turn it back to historic main i- in color, we're really not changing anything, anything other than the way the map is displayed. But having this hash mark over the top, and so that's, that's where we know that the promenade. Um, is, and then we can go back to the definition of promenade.
Better.
Does this make more sense?
I think it looks the same, like I feel like it should just be right next to the red first floor.
Um, just so a note.
Just be like in parentheses first floor, I mean.
Yeah, it's in the description, but that's not part of the map.
Can we take a question from?
Yes.
Melanie?
Hi, um, so I was just gonna say, I, I know we're kind of uh, working on moving forward with this, um. Based on the history and then the current downtown master plan and the vision behind it. Um, I, I am opposed to uh, adding this to the promenade. I am a hundred percent for and supportive of probably much any variation of what anybody wants to consider for the other zones, but. I do think, um, like we kind of mentioned um, last week. With, if, if we're gonna look at permitting this on the promenade, so obviously just that downstairs first floor. Along Main Street, then I think it kicks back to this long. Conversation we've had multiple times since I've been a planning commissioner. About like the membership organizations being in there, cuz there's, if, if we can justify one, we can justify the other, and the reason that we. Have uh, set the membership organizations to not be down there and then um, again with the, with the big meetings and banquets and, and whatnot. Is because of the vision, um, within like the downtown master plan and what city council has, um. Has stated multiple times in, in various capacities is that the idea for that downtown promenade is to be. Have businesses that are open at, you know, for maximum hours or regular hours to bring people in consistently. And if you start to do the conditional uses or the outright permitted for, you know, the membership organizations or these, then you're gonna have. Fewer and fewer spaces where dedicated to people coming in and out on the regular, so. Um, I wanna honor that, I mean, I, I've said before that when we look at the history. That we don't always wanna sit there and, and say just because it wasn't wanted or, you know, before. That, that's not a big reason to not look at it now, but I think this is a piece of like the historic vision. With Monroe, um, that's been in place for a long time and has been a work in progress. I think this is one that at least, um, for the time being, we need to, to honor, that's my opinion, so. I am personally opposed to adding conditional or permitted to the downtown promenade, but I'm cool with. Any variation of whatever over the other three zonings here downtown.
Thanks, Melanie. Kelsey?
Um, so on the table notes, there's um, number eight, and it says conditional uses within the downtown promenade shall be open. To the public a minimum of five days or totaling a minimum of twenty-four hours a week, so doesn't that cover these places being closed if they wanted? Like if Lewis and Maine wanted to have a private event or like, or is that different?
Lewis and Maine can have a private event, yeah.
Okay, that's like the, um, if lovers wanted to have a private event, like I'm trying to just go down this. They're not, they're just straight up not allowed to do that because they're on the promenade.
They can have a.
So they all can already do this.
If you are a permitted use today and you're crane on main, you're already an arcade. Or you're a lover's package, or you're a bar. And you want to do an event to support your business, you can do that today because your use is outright permitted. But if you are doing a banquet hall or a meeting event space specifically to bring people in. For um, a dinner party or a tattoo or a um, stamping. And that is your business, you have events, that's what we're talking about. It's not somebody that's already established with a permitted use, the museum, they have uh, events to support the museum. The bars, uh, restaurants, all of those, you could do that as part of your ongoing business. But if your business is to have events, that's your sole purpose, you have to follow these rules. Does that, does that make sense?
Like if you're coming in with a business, I have a business.
There's just not accessory to it, like.
Yeah, your whole business is these events.
Got it.
That's what we're trying to fix.
Okay, Brandy?
So what about from everybody's input, um, what if we leave everything as is and then add? Conditional to the residential neighborhood. Districts and leave nothing on the downtown promenade.
For major and minor or conditional for minor?
I mean, at least for minor, I threw it out there for both, but.
I think we should do.
Or if, if no one's willing to move on any of that, our other option. I, I would be okay if we, if we started out with this and we could always add to it later, but I would like to see us, um.
But I mean, so residential neighborhood, the residential neighborhood frames the western edge of the historic main area. It contains existing single-family houses, multifamily buildings and some commercial uses. This mix of uses is appropriate for this neighborhood as a transitional edge, so that's what you're picking up on, transitional edge. Between single-family neighborhoods and the historic main area to provide a setting for small businesses and close-in housing options. Future redevelopment in this area will provide a mix of uses, residential uses in, in this neighborhood are limited to single-family residences and multifamily dwellings. Which is what Amy told us, right?
Correct.
So that is your angle is transitional for small. Banquet event facilities?
And I'm thinking of what is actually available in the areas. And I, again, I keep going back to a place in downtown Snohomish that's on uh, Avenue D, like by their school from. Second street, you go up, there's a house that's been converted into. A banquet hall and you can rent it out for funerals or large dinner parties and it just reminds me of. Area of houses that we already have in this area that could, they're close enough to walk still to downtown, so you're still gonna be a feeder. To the businesses downtown, like if you use this, if you did that idea on one seventy-ninth. That wouldn't be helpful to the downtown businesses, it wouldn't bring that liveliness, send, you know, lively center, so.
Okay, cuz I was, I just remember back to when you said you like historic houses to remain historic houses, so you don't want them, so. Not true?
No, that's true, I did say that, I have said that, yes, that's true.
I just think we should err on the side of like letting these things. Like see how it goes and not be so permit, prohibited, so that we can see what happens with our town with these new ideas that people bring in.
And if it's a bad idea, we just leave it to the next planning commission.
Isn't that true?
Yeah, cuz our term is sure.
You're right.
Well, then let's just not do.
I am fine, I am fine with it, just this, if, this is a move forward, so if, if people are comfortable and we can get. Consensus on just this, I could see this being a good started place.
So do you wanna do a strap home? Amy needs guidance, yeah, I need some guidance, so. So should we do like a small vote on this to, you know, does everyone agree that this, what we is on the screen is what we want?
I say, yes for me.
Okay.
I, I, before people vote, just from a procedural standpoint, just understand that whatever you vote does not obligate you to vote the same way at the public hearing.
I just need to know what to bring forward to the public hearing.
Okay, just so everybody understands that.
We, we need general consensus to move forward.
Yeah, okay, so let's start, if you say, was everybody okay with this, and then we say yes or no, and then we add this, is everybody okay like that?
Sure.
That works, yeah.
Is everybody okay with how this looks, just as is now, after our discussion?
Okay.
All right, all right, all right, I have a couple more things, I wanna go back to this.
So you would like to propose?
Um, if we added conditional to the minors in residential neighborhood. I think I like that.
Kelsey, yes, Brandy's a yes.
Yes.
Melanie's a yes.
Okay.
Liz is a yes.
Okay, so that's majority, okay, move forward with that, great.
And I do think square dancing things.
Oh, yeah.
So I feel like we shouldn't be able to do that.
You want to try.
Tons of fun and shirts, so you'll come?
Or you just wanna do baby steps?
We could see, I mean, I'm, I'm probably gonna not, who would vote for a conditional use for a residential neighborhood? Majors.
I know, no, okay. And can we get confirmation that promenade is not on the table?
Off limits.
I agree.
Okay, okay, so. I have guidance, all right, so, um, going back to this map. This is a proposed change in the code, it is, it currently looks like the left. And Edab felt that it would uh, make more sense looking like the right. Just remember, we're not changing any boundaries, um, any uses, it's really just the way that the information is displayed to you.
That's how we should have done it originally.
I think so.
Hatch, hash marks or cross hatches or whatever, so that people didn't block out.
And assume the whole thing was the promenade.
That's true.
Is the hashes on the legend right there downtown planning, does it say anywhere that that's the first floor anyway?
In the description of the neighborhood that. It's actually right next to it in the code in um, twenty-two, twenty-two, oh, four, oh, the, the, um. The descriptions of each zone is right next to this image.
But if we're changing it to make it more clear and it's saying, like, oh, you still have to scroll to do that, I don't feel like it is changing much.
Yeah, I hate having not a, all the information on a map or a, a table, then you have to go and look at the back page or. Kind of, I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, um need thoughts from our client commissioners on the land if we could. Liz.
I mean, I like the thought, I agree with having it on the map, even, I mean. Cuz you could just put one S T or one. For, yeah, one S T and then F L R. You know, keep it really short, but I agree having it on. The map itself, I feel like might help reduce some confusion cuz I agree anytime you're flipping from here to there to there. People don't always read everything, so.
Thanks, Liz. Any thoughts, Melanie?
Um I like the the new proposal because. I think it just, yeah, it's clearer and I agree that it probably should have been that way from the get-go.
Perfect, so we're thinking of maybe adding just underneath on the legend, underneath downtown promenade like. It it's sort of like first floor. Businesses that face Main Streets, kind of a long description, I don't know if we could.
Or how how do we see historic main is on that? On on the second floor? Do we see that?
You go back to the description.
Well, I think that's why they're saying leaving it orange helps to show that that's. Yeah, okay. That's actually historic main and then the hashtags mean first floor.
First floor. Businesses that face Main Street, but it's not any residential portions.
Yeah, maybe see how short you can get that.
Well, it would apply, so for downtown planning area, it applies to the whole thing, yeah.
What if you do an asterisk behind downtown promenade and then put the asterisk like underneath? Uh you know, where it's like map not to scale or.
Number one foot.
Yeah, and then. And then it could be that longer.
Okay.
True definition.
All right, I will make changes to that and bring it back. To the hearing. But if we, yeah, just confirming that we, nothing has changed here from the last time we've seen it, everyone was good with this. Any questions? Right, uh and also this one, it sounded like we were all um on the.
Okay, so on um if if they can, if the businesses that they wanted. Um maybe I'm getting still stuck on that thought, but um. If the businesses stay open and a membership wants to come in. Is that, is that what we're talking about here, this is specifically only membership? Organizations going in um cuz like. A membership organization, if they can meet at a place. That's still open, is that?
Um you don't. You don't, yeah.
You can already do that.
Yeah, this is specific, so the example.
Only to have like, I'm paying rent to this place for this membership.
Exactly.
And only letting my members in.
So everyone good with this one? Right. Visitors center, everyone good with that, those changes we brought forward, okay? Um it sounds like we we don't need to talk about this, so we have, we got some consensus on it, I'm just gonna click through, we've seen the the definitions. Major and minor, um this we uh Kate came up with some pros and cons of uh having the venues in the promenade, I think we talked about that as well. And here's our current timeline, tentative timeline, um we were hoping to bring this for a hearing on September thirtieth.
Sorry, when um the the Edab, what other feedback did they have, they said talked about the map, but.
They they really liked what was brought forward, they their only feedback, they were, they made a recommendation to bring it um that. To you um as is, except for the map change.
And then you'll have to go in front of city council between now and September thirty?
No, I'll go to in front of city council after you hold your public hearing.
Okay, good.
So next steps from here um. Are, is there any notices that go out about this public hearing and to who?
Yeah, so um we are required to send them out to our, the newspaper. Um posting at the library city hall, mailing to the. Building, the property owners within the affected area, but Hannah has a list of business owners within the affected area that we're also sending it out to. We're also um gonna, we're gonna be putting out some state signs, but we don't really know, you know, maybe on one end of each of of that area. Um we're trying to get the word out.
Um for the police station, are we adding that that's a substation um for vigil anywhere? Or is that just like, we're gonna remember? I feel like that.
Oh, so going back to that, a government, so for the government, um you have to go all the way back to our pr- our original conversation. The concerns were to have um a full-fledged police station was not desirable, but to have a smaller. Somewhat like what used to be um of a Galaxy Theater. I think that was okay, if I remember the conversation correctly. And so maybe for the.
Satellite or a substation?
They call it a substation, but it's basically is already constrained by the space available anyways, so. There's not space for a full-size police station, so it was just gonna be uh what originally we were thinking that bicycle. Police officers.
Social workers.
Yeah, and social workers would really help downtown, so we'd love to have that, you know, if they had the. Uh the workforce to be able to staff it, that would be ideal for downtown, just to help the downtown businesses.
So are we thinking um changing police stations to something, another name and then adding a definition?
Well, no, I think Kelsey was just thinking we'd call it a police substation, doesn't need to be called.
I think we need that needs to be in there because of like clarification for later if we're all gone um. Right, or no?
Uh well, I just wanna clarify, my recollection of the conversation was it was the promenade specifically that there was concern because the other ones are already. Conditionally uses, and so you would need to have a footnote to that specific conditional use for police station, oh yeah.
Like there is for conditional uses and down.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Is that, is, are we voting on all of this then, the table twenty-two?
No, you are just directing staff to put a package together and set up.
All right, oh, Melanie, good job, thank you, Melanie.
I moved to direct staff to prepare a formal amendment package for the commission's consideration, set a public hearing date. Complete the environmental review and agency outreach process.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thanks, Brandy, commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Thank you all for the great discussion, we're rolling to item six point three. Amy, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Six point three Monroe twenty forty-four, review final drafts of chapters three, land use um. Chapter five, economic development, chapter six, housing, chapter nine, utilities. And chapter ten shoreline and natural environment, and we have Kate here tonight to run through some of this.
Yes, we are get, we are getting there, very excited. All right, uh you can go to the next page. All right, so again, as Jay just mentioned, the topics for this evening, and this is round two um based. You had your original review. Many months ago, all the comments that we received have been incorporated. So tonight, we're gonna refresh on land use chapter, economic development. Housing, utility, shoreline and all of the associated appendices, your package is very thick, there are three hundred and some odd pages for this particular topic. Next page, thank you, um so starting off with the land use, you're gonna see the slide quite frequently, again, our. Our task is to figure out housing pop or how to accommodate people, housing and jobs through twenty forty-four. Where we are from the twenty twenty census to um the numbers that we were assigned through the Snohomish County tomorrow process. So that is our goal, next slide. So part of that process is the land use, how are we gonna accommodate it? Based on the environmental review that we've done to date, the land use designations as they exist today will not accommodate what we are being asked to do. So we looked at a bunch of different options and the map, uh the map on your screen. Is showing those small areas that we're looking at changing. Again, as a reminder, we were not having trouble accommodating housing and people, it was jobs, and so. Trying to figure out um how to do that, we were out in the public last year, we kept hearing uh we needed to have more neighborhood. Commercial, um we continually hear there needs to be um some kind of. Grocery store or something for the residents of Monroe, especially on the west side of the city. Because you have to get into basically North Kelsey through uh Woods Creek. For the commercial, so um just as a reminder, off of Roosevelt Road, that's uh recommended to be mixed use. Then the next little nodal change is there's a small piece off of the Chain Lake Road um. The, thank you, uh the next changes are a hundred and seven, oh, there's two of them. Um just south of the hospital that converts to mixed use from just a basic residential. And then uh one seventy-nine between five twenty-two and Main Street, that also changes. The other areas that we have talked about are um the entire US two general commercial. The zoning or the the designation doesn't change, the work will come as we're updating the zoning code and the. Plan for that was to build upon the North Kelsey overlay that allows uh both. Commercial and now adding in residential. And infill development around um along the rest of those developments on US two. Uh the intent for downtown commercial does not change, other than we're hoping to see some activity happen there and and redevelopment. Um again, we've covered multiple times. Uh the challenge for us, for staff, is to figure out how to craft zoning that encourages the retention of the beautiful historic. Homes, uh keep the mix of residential, but also allow now some additional uses, acknowledging that um the people. Living down there are going to um energize or activate the Main Street board. So um at the end of the day, you have all these mixed, my collage from uh when I introduced this last year. Next slide. Actually, let go back one, um so in your package, the things that I would really like you, if you've not taken a look, is um. Just looking through the goals and policies um in the land use. Uh draft chapter, so things that um if you have questions are after, starting on page three point thirteen. It talks about the designation and then what the zoning would allow um to implement, so I. If you haven't looked at it, um it has not changed significantly since you saw it earlier this year. And then the next section that I'd really like, if again, if you've not had a chance already, are the goals and policies, and that's pages three twenty through. Uh three. Three twenty-nine. Nope, nope, I lied. Through three thirty-one. So that's really the focus and this is. Do we have the right mix of goals and policies, did we hear you um when we were discussing this last time? I'll just stop there really quickly for questions and comments.
Okay.
Okay, okay, next. Economic development, we've seen this one many times and really appreciate all the feedback the commission gave us, especially on the existing conditions document. Um the piece that uh was added through the economic advisory board is this piece. Um strengths, opportunities, weaknesses and threats, this is actually one of the re- uh required components of an economic development plan. And that's um pretty early in the chapter. Again, not a lot of changes since uh you saw it last, I'm hopeful that all of the comments and corrections you gave us. Are incorporated, if not, please let me know. Um and then again on this one, really going through the goals and policies again, beginning on uh page five dash one two. And there's a handful of pages. Through five point three or five dash two three. Stop again, questions, comments, concerns.
I think, do you have specific page numbers on that?
We don't, it's just um why I print this out, I don't get the master.
I have page numbers, yes, so um so you said five twelve.
Yeah.
Five twelve is eight nineteen on your PDF. And then. All the way to five twenty-three is is eight thirty on your PDF. And go back to um real quick, just go back to um land use.
Oh, yeah.
Had us, wanted to look at. Three, three dash thirteen is page seven eighty-eight. And then she wanted us to look at three nineteen. Which is seven nine four two. All the way through eight oh six.
Okay, and um just as a a reminder on the economic development um piece, Edab was the lead. And so they did a lot of work, um so hopefully you can see that reflected in the in the document. Next slide. Housing is the really big one that we had to focus on, this is the most. Um the biggest changes out of state law, there are requirements that we start addressing. Uh racial inequity, addressing income levels, being much more uh thoughtful in how we're. Um developing and ensuring that. All members of our community can afford to live here, and so the big changes in this um chapter. There's a lot more emphasis on the mixture of our residents, which have on the slide up here, just the racial composition. Um and then it has the maps further in talking about um. Again, the areas that have been identified with lower income, higher minority groups, which is generally. South of five twenty-two, or excuse me, south of US two and east of five twenty-two. Um I know there was concern about the Department of Corrections Population having an influence on this. Uh the information was based on US Census data. When we got into the house burden, we were very specific about doing household data as the source because that. Eliminates group housing population, so there's a little bit of a mix in this information. Um how uh housing cost burden, there's a lot of information on that as well, because this is a new stronger task. We were actually required to do it historically, but there's been an emphasis now that we actually start showing how we're accommodating. Um our residents who don't have higher incomes, and so. The piece that was introduced to you most recently was that middle square slide about the um. Emergency housing capacity, we do, we're actually in better shape than a lot of communities, just on, we already have. Some um um shelters. Um the housing voucher program. And so that mix puts us a little ahead, um the all, the other thing is the state requires that if you allow hotels, you also now also need to provide. The ability for an affordable housing type of project. We already have hotels in our community, basically in the general commercial, there are some communities that don't, so I'm grateful for that. And then the final uh table, based on income bands, this is how we're gonna try to accomplish this. So we we acknowledge that it will be harder to provide a purchased home. For our lowest income segment, so we're really gonna try to focus on more of our high um high density. Types of housing to accommodate that, and then working down to our above um um. The AMI, average median income, um talks about the different housing, and so that's talking about the category, talks about. The type of housing and then it shows you the zones and then it shows you how we we believe the number of units we can achieve. Based on the buildable lands and the additional urban footprint. modeling that Mig used to help us figure out the different changes to our land use designations.
So Kate, why did I think that the R four uh designation was going to go away?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
You are correct. Um and that's for a multitude of reasons. It is shown on this uh particular table, but that's obsolete. One of the things that also changed in uh uh state law, as well as the requirements for Snohomish County, is that in order to annex, we have to have a minimum density of six dwelling units per net acre. Our um our lowest density zone is one unit por- per seven acres, and that's gross. So we're gonna see how that works, but that was a state cha- um that was a state and county change in order for us to annex. So looking at what we're trying to achieve, that made the most sense. And it opens up opportunity, um really anything north of SR five twenty two, that's the biggest area that currently has that zoning.
More so five twenty two.
I, US two, I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm getting those confused tonight.
Good.
US two.
Okay.
Questions before I go on? Okay, so on this one again, um really please take a look at the
Yeah, Melanie, we'd like to extend it immediately.
Yes, I'm gonna do. I move that we extend the meeting past nine PM.
I second that.
Thanks. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, thank you.
Okay, and Jay, you're gonna have to help me again on the page numbers in your packet. Um goals and policies. Really take a look. Um again, I think we have uh include, oh, for mine, it starts on page um six point one. I'm not sure what that number is in the packet. Six dash one.
I don't, I must not.
Keep going, it's at the end of that section. You're gonna have to help me. I don't know what I do wrong to not get the packet numbers on there.
Oh, oh. Yeah.
It's at the end.
Yeah. Well, six point one starts on six dash sixteen, which is in your packet is eight four seven.
If you have your printer setting defaults to no margins, that may happen.
Oh, okay.
And if I'm right, please let me know. Don't do well with printing.
So she's printing from the native document, not the PDF?
Actually, it was PDF. I actually was, yeah, I was printing from, so my quick way is I go to the calendar on the city's homepage, and then I go to planning or I go clicked on today's date and then clicked on the planning commission.
Okay.
So I'll try that and no margin.
But that would be specifically your private setting.
Yeah. Yeah, so the only other thing I'd say about the golden policies and the document itself is we were trying to incorporate the Housing Action Plan that the city adopted a couple of years ago. That included the analysis for um what's available. It did touch on income levels in the community, so there were some goals and policies that we asked to be incorporated in the document. So any questions with housing?
Good.
Okay, and then um on housing, also the very last page gives you the specific changes to state law, so you can see what we were required to to do. Moving on, utilities, this one's really straightforward. The biggest change for this uh update is in twenty fifteen, the city combined capital facilities and utilities. Before that, they were separate chapters. We're going back to that, because the city actually updates the capital facilities plan with the budget, which happens much more frequently than your annual um your update or your ten year update. And it uh from guidance with our city attorney, to do that capital improvement plan, it really needs to be specific to the capital facilities. So that's why we pulled it apart. The utilities really focuses on all of those services that the city does not provide. So it's the PUD, PSE, Republic. And so um we still have to show that we are working with our providers. And so we have who they are and a description of the service they provide. It's a very short and sweet chapter. Um so in yours, um
I, I was so disinterested that I didn't.
Okay, fair enough. Um so for the goals and policies, um you're in chapter nine, and it's uh pages nine eight through it's nine fourteen. They're pretty straightforward, but um again, I know we have had some comments, so just make sure that we captured everything that you told us earlier in the year. Okay, I think that's my last slide. So we're just gonna hang there. There's um I still want to walk you through the document again. The next section that is in your packet is Appendix five A. The planning commission, in addition to EDAB, did a lot of work on commenting on the economic existing conditions. Items that had been cut were the graphic of changes in vacancy rates was not on the same page as the narrative, so we tried to fix that. The narrative did not necessarily uh coincide where or was not consistent with what the graph was telling you. There were some errors on um biennial, biannual instead of biennial. So I think we've captured all that, but if you're going through, just kind of skim for those items that um you had identified in our first round. Actually, first two rounds of conversation. Um the next appendices is the Housing Action Plan. Again, that was adopted in twenty nineteen by resolution, so if you're not familiar with it, you might just take a quick look. Moving on, the next item in your packet is the um sorry, uh the racial disparity impact analysis. You've seen this a couple of times. I don't remember having a lot of comments from the group. But again, just if you have questions reviewing it, let me know, and I'll get back to our consultants on that one. Lots of mapping in that. And then um the last appendices is the inclusive community analysis. And that was the tables that this doesn't, we need to fix this, we need to address this. It was the orange, the yellow, green, orange, green is good, yellow's concern, oranges, we need to make a change. This was all done before the current plan. So all of these items have been addressed with a current draft. And so with two minutes to spare, at least for this topic, any questions? Okay, all right, so schedule, just run run through it one more time. Today is the sixteenth. Um next week, Jacob Roberts will be joining us in the event that you have more questions on water sewer, stormwater, transportation. So we're gonna go through the capital facilities. That is the second half of the utilities. Again, this is everything that the either the city owns or is a qua- um a public entity such as the Public Hospital District, the school districts, um all of our infrastructure. Trying to think if there's anything else in that one. Oh, the fire district, almost forgot the fire district.
So anything in institutional zones?
Basically, it is covered in this, yes. Transportation, parks, and then the appendices that go through that. So that will be yet another really big, thick document. Because um in the share file, what I might do is just have you go to the share file for the utility plans, because those are really big documents. Is that, have you, have you tried that recently? The show, okay. Anyone online, have you tried the share file link? No, okay.
And did we send out the the updated one on Friday? With all of the, yeah, okay, okay.
So
I can include the share file one, but I just reviewed the agendas.
Okay, we'll we'll do that, because there are just, there are some very large files in there. Uh and then your public hearing is on the thirtieth, and then in October, we'll go through the conversation findings and drafting the findings, um conclusions, and your recommendation to city council. And then the council's schedule is on the right hand side, and this thing is going to get adopted by the end of December.
So what's that date underneath the ten one date?
And blank. Oh, my goodness, I am so sorry. That's like
I mean, it
You can tell I've been going way too fast on things. So, no, um so October first is the first, yes, you are correct, um October fifteenth. And then I do have the twenty second um identified as a fallback if the council needs a third meeting before their public hearing.
Excellent.
Yeah. So, any questions? All right, I guess my final comment is um we had a uh meeting, our standing meeting with Mig this morning. There will be some minor modifications to how the logo is used. This document will be the soft launch, launch, sorry, I'm tired uh for the new logo. And so um it's, we are trying to make this, well, we're not gonna try it. We are going to make this document compliant with the guidelines for the company that established um the new logo. So there'll be some minor revisions to that.
On that, yeah, didn't city council make a couple little changes to the logo, like it's all in caps and stuff? So that one will be
See that.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And um included in the package are tiles with specific word categories um connecting to Imagine Monroe. And so those tiles will be included with specific chapters. We're not gonna do a color coded by chapter, but the tile will be included um in the header, so you can see the connection. And so that's been
Does that go with that idea that they originally were telling us about with the logo people that like there would be badges?
Like, yes.
For like community
Yes.
Wear and then like city staff and, okay.
Yeah, and we look to senior leadership to figure out which badge goes with which chapter. So um you'll see that incorporated in the final draft. And um that will be online by next Thursday. So everybody and anybody can start looking at it online. All right, so that is the end of my warp speed review.
So our requested action is just provide feedback when we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or Yeah, I had asked for it. I mean, honestly, this can be ongoing um uh edits provided. I will be turning in my staff report for your public hearing, though. That will be in no changes after that, at least for planning commission, no later than September twenty fourth. So if you're seeing things, um the sooner I see them, the better, but this will be going through December for council to adopt, so you still have opportunity.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Um new business for, nothing for new business, we're going with discussion by commissioners and staff. Liz?
I just want to thank staff for all the fabulous presentations and all the work that's gone into this. We really, really appreciate it. Quick question, is there any way of getting an update on if anything's moving on the Lowe's CCNR issue? Since of course, that piece of land came up today, um and I am well aware of that's that's been a huge hindrance. But my only other comment is stay healthy, everybody's getting sick, uh COVID. That's why I'm not in Montana right now, because my family got COVID. So anyways, just hope everybody stays healthy. Thank you.
I defer to Lance on your question. I I'm not in the loop, and I don't know what is um publicly available.
Okay, Lance, you're up next, please.
Okay, um well, in in regards to the Lowe's, the the city, and and I know, God, this has been the message for how long? Since before I got here, this, but the city is in contact with Lowe's. I I mean, we've literally gone through phases, just in the period that I've been here, where we're in, we're in communication with them, and then we're not. Um we are, and we we actually have been um in discussion with a a couple of developers. Have, I think that Planning Commission had been given the flyer that Patrick Darty had put out really as a advertisement, if you will, um there's a better word for it, I'm sure. About North Kelsey and what the city is trying to do there. And we have had some conversations with a few developers who have shown some interest. And in one of those situations, uh the developer was interested and willing to help the city negotiate, if possible, uh some resolution with Lowe's. The thought being that if we had someone who was who was at the table and was showing the the uh the the commitment to make it work with Lowe's. Could that, that was one of the reasons that they wanted to be there, that maybe that would be a compelling message with Lowe's. So we, the city is in, it is in contact with Lowe's, and and we'll see. As far as the timeframe, I I have no idea. And uh but it's we'll, we'll see where that goes. It's a good question. I, and I guess, other than that, I don't really have any updates. I do wanna, I wanna thank the the Planning Commission for your robust conversation and discussion today. And um and and staff who are doing a fantastic job, so thank you to everybody, I guess.
Great, thanks, thanks a lot, Lance. Melanie?
Um, yes, I have been uh driving around town, seeing all the nice new paint on the roads. Uh the city's been doing a great job of getting the, getting the stripes all fresh around town, and I've only seen minimal tire marks of people who accidentally drove over wet paint, so um it's looking nice. And then um I was actually gonna say the same thing, sort of as Liz, in terms of take your vitamins, get enough rest and fluids, because the back to school stickies are making their way around town. Um we have not gotten hit with COVID. I should knock on some wood, but um definitely some sniffles over in this house. So just to be be safe, be healthy. And apparently, according to the Aurora dings on my phone while I've been sitting here, the Aurora is out. So if you can get past the light pollution and the moon um and look north, you might have a shot at seeing the Aurora Borealis tonight. So other than that, thank you, staff. Thank you, fellow commissioners. And we'll see you again next week.
Thanks, Melanie. Kelsey.
Um, yeah, all of this is really hard, so I'm so thankful for you, staff. Because this is like, I I'm seeing how extremely, how many layers there are to all this, and it's um like, nothing is cut and dry. So every week I feel more and more like, wow, that's really do a great job. So when we do the flyers for sending out the public meeting for this specific one, is there a way we can have, like, this doesn't affect existing businesses, uh this code change doesn't, so people don't freak out about what, or like, I don't, I guess I don't know what those, what information gets sent to the public. But like, it seems like the public might have misinformation on what happens when these forward lays happen. Um like these, the two gentlemen that came in, that's not gonna affect their business at all, these zoning things. So if we could just say asterisk somewhere, like, this isn't going to affect any, like, they're not gonna have to go pull new permits for these existing businesses, because that doesn't seem to me common knowledge. Or how does?
So there isn't a way to do that, and I would actually rather err on the side of caution and have more comments. I would suspect the New New Hearts, is that right? They're, they're very interested in what happens in downtown, so they're gonna show up regardless if it impacts them or not. But if they, there's not, there's not, there's not an easy way in the public hearing notice. I think it goes um it will say downtown commercial, it'll say land use matrix, uh we'll be adding in the um
It doesn't have a lot of information on like
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're talking about
We just, did it send the public to some, to like more information about it then?
Yeah, um we should have that information online, and if not, I'll definitely work with Amy to make sure that because on um the city's website, on community development, it has all of private land use applications, but it also has a page that talks about all this stuff. So we could definitely make sure that that is um provided, so people could get more information.
Yeah, so like, they know what they're coming in to publicly comment on, because if they don't know how to get to it to comment, I think that that what's the point of them coming in? Because they, we don't get any feedback to them uh when they come in. So that's helpful. I've never seen one. Um so that's helpful. I've never seen one before, so thank you.
Yeah, this is um, this is the uh postcard that was sent out for the um the public hearing on the thirtieth. Um it has all of the information on date, time, um the project location and it gives a. Description of the actual project, so it gives like a pretty. Um I think a pretty thorough breakdown of the code amendment that um is being proposed.
It is pretty formal, it looks like it has like a set.
Yeah.
Things, you don't really get to make adjustments.
Yeah, and I'll and and I'll throw it out to the planning commissioners again, like when you, if if you're talking to folks who have questions about. Actions that are going on with the city and and specifically this one. Um the the cities, the community development website has a project page, which has all of these documents on it. And I know that people have to weed through it, but it it, you know, it is the correct information and it is a good, a good place for people to start. And obviously, they can reach out to staff and ask follow up questions, but that's, that's always a good place to send votes.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that um not only for the downtown, but Leanne also has her draft materials, so people can click on. Um the strike through underlines.
And then um I was wondering when, when things are complained about in the city, like this hidden room. Situation, um is there not a three month or six month warning or like to change your actions? Cuz um I actually called both of those um business owners today to get like more information on what's going on and. J- uh Jessica's just really like, she closed her business basically cuz she doesn't know what she can do. And um it seems like she should be able to still do her meetings, just not the specific events. Can she still do her consultations, which are within the the confines of like her business license? Can't she can have consultations there? She hasn't been because she's under the impression that she cannot run her business at all.
So we can talk offline. Uh and I'm gonna ask Stacy Criswell, who is our building official and oversees code compliance. There is a full process that we follow and we have to be consistent. Um I don't know, Lance, do you wanna add to that?
And and this is, and I I apologize, this, this is bureaucratic procedure. Uh but this was also a message that, cuz we've been having some conversations with city council about code code enforcement, cuz code compliance. Um and I just want the commissioners to be aware, like I said, this is the same message that we were given to city council as well. Is that when you get questions about specific cases, really the the best thing to do is to have them call staff. Uh I mean, there there, there is a potential for um ex parte contact, that these are legislative matters. So the planning commission is is a pretty wide, you know, wide parameters, but just so people are aware of that, I have, I'm invoking. Our our city attorney and saying this, but that that, you know, that doesn't prevent you from having conversations with people. And 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 I'm glad that people are reaching out to planning commissioners and and city council members. But um there, there is a process and there are situations where, I'll give you example. Where the city was gonna, was making a uh concerted effort for specifically for political signs. And we'll put notice out, we did some Facebook postings just to let people know that the city is gonna do that in cases like. Um the one with the hidden room, it it's somewhat of an isolated incident. It's not like we were reaching out and saying, oh, you know, the this, it for folks who are doing X Y Z. Um you've got, you know, six months to get into compliance. I I don't know if that was your question or not, but I mean, there is. There is a long process with 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 code compliance and and so they, what seems like it happened overnight, didn't happen overnight. It's, it's been, the city's had conversations and things have occurred over a period of of usually months before that occurs.
And I would add if um. I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. It's not Jamie, it's the other gal. Jessica, if she actually were just doing consultations, that is a permitted use, but that's not what was happening. Um she was advertising these events and.
Right, but she got, she got shut down first, like right away, right? Or like under, wonder what she said.
That's, that's why we should talk offline. There's a process and we'll have Stacy come in.
Okay, we can talk specifically about her offline, but is there specifically like an a period of time? Where it's like you get a warning and you get a warning and then you get a, and then you're shut down.
Yes.
Okay.
There's.
I figured there was, but I didn't know if like we have that writing or whatever. Um so that's great. So is the, is it like weeks, is it months, or is it specifically on that?
It really depends on how.
If it's a safety issue, it's probably right away, but if it's.
Well, and it also has to do with how willing the property owner, business owner is willing to work with us. So um Lance, do you think Stacy would be available to to give that presentation to the planning commission? Just kind of an overview tutorial on code compliance?
Yeah, I think we could do that. It it'd be a little bit different than than city council, but just that. In in general, to answer the question and 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 every case, every case is different. But typically, what the city, the city will send out a letter to uh or a phone call or some contact. To a property owner, a business owner. One, asking for additional information. I mean, it it's, you know, maybe we really don't know what's going on, but it it's, you know, it it's a. Um a situation that we believe is going on, we 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 state it that way, we ask for them to contact us. So that we can provide it more information to them, they can provide information to us. So tip, and typically that first letter is gonna be contact us within fourteen days. Um if there, if there is a violation, then there is, it it can depend on what it is. If it's a public, if it's a public health and safety issue, um you know, say a restaurant has. Some, you know, sewage leaking or or something of that nature. Uh then they may be shut down immediately, but in a situation like this, where where it's not a public health and safety issue. Typically, the the timeframes are fourteen days. Um and and there'll be two or three different ones of those, cuz there's different steps that we go through. But we also work with folks when their, you know, circumstances are, you can't necessarily. Rectify a situation immediately, um so the city takes takes that into account. So if somebody is working with us to 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 get into compliance, we have some flexibility to expect, to extend those those timelines. So every one of them is a little bit different.
And it's actually codified in our code. We have a chapter that specifically talks about code compliance. Um I can send, send that to you. Um the other thing, kind of what I wanna echo what Lance was saying earlier tonight, if anybody is asking you questions, please send them to us. We we want people to um succeed, we want them to be.
Like she can't go to the city and that's a problem, like that's a, that's a huge problem, like.
Realistically, that's where her answers lie, is her, the right answer to her problem. Lies with the city administration, so we're not gonna be able to give her the right answer.
But we can help like get towards the answer through our codes, like today, we were able to help her with. The historic code being events, but I think I'm under the impression that she won't be able to do that anyway because of her license, right? So like even though those like we put the license or that we can, she can, we can have events in the historic upstairs. She still won't be able to do that, right? Because of her license, or I don't, I don't know, that's a question.
So she will. Code is being changed, so. Well, it's a piece of it. This is again, kind of like we're talking about when this was introduced. This type of use has been requested for a very long time and the city did not take care of it. When they could have in twenty nineteen, when title twenty two. And we keep getting inquiries and it's not just downtown, we've gotten it in the general commercial district. Um but this event, Kate, this situation came about, I will still talk to you offline because you're only hearing one side of the story. So.
But 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 to answer it, if, and this is a a big if, capital I, capital F, capital F. If we, if the code as it was presented today was adopted, if that were the code today. She could do exactly what she is doing currently, so I don't know why she would think that was.
And then is there anything that she can start today? Like she, could she call you guys tomorrow and say, what can I do today with my business? So that she's not out of business for another thirty days.
Can we talk about this?
This is not appropriate.
This is, this is.
This has a, this, we're way off topic.
It has nothing to do with like.
So I am, no, I'm saying we're done talking about this particular item during this particular meeting.
It is not.
Why you're here though? Like as a, as a, as a government, like as a body.
I'm saying we're done talking about.
Cuz I think um it's just too specific about like one, one.
Brandy, would you care to?
Um, I would, yeah, my thoughts are, I I know this issue with. Like customer service of the city is not new, like meaning like thirty years old, but what I do think is new is the. The staff's reaction and like how, you know, like you were saying in two thousand nineteen, they didn't take the initiative to fix some stuff, but like. Right now, all the staff, it seems like are super interested in coming up with solutions and that's really cool. And like saying, please call us and we wanna be resources and stuff, so and Lance commenting earlier on it too, like that's. That's, I like that the staff these days are really working towards solutions and being helpful, so thank you. And I like that we're having our weekly meetings. I feel like we're getting through a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you. Don't have anything. Thank you. The meetings are long. Um and I appreciate the quantity that we're getting. It is hard to get through, but we do have the opportunity to review, comments. Um during our work week, if we didn't get to it on the weekend, so that is excellent. So appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. What do you have for us?
I got nothing, I'm tapped out. Uh we'll see you next week and then you uh be prepared to read the novel of all novels for your public hearing on September thirtieth.
Okay.
You're gonna be there, right, Melanie?
Yeah, and we'll be back in the fire station. There was just a conflict tonight.
Okay.
Next week, we'll be back in the fire district, so.
Hannah?
I don't have anything besides the twenty second is the first day of fall, which I think is crazy. That's this upcoming Sunday.
I saw a guy walking around Lake Tide today without a shirt.
It's even crazier.
Yeah, it was especially crazy cuz he shouldn't have been, even if it was ninety, but.
That's all I had.
I I wanna, I wanna, I I was, I mean, um I wanna specifically thank Hannah. I think everybody realizes. But this changing of venues and all this is really difficult. And she has managed this process like, like an ace and I just wanna thank her for that, so.
Thanks.
You might not have seen it, but Kelsey showed up um and Hannah pulled out an iPad from I don't know where. And got her set up, it was, yeah, was, you wanna take her places cuz she's got one of everything somewhere.
That's it?
That's it. Can I get somebody to move?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Thanks, Melanie. All in favor, please say aye.